We should have stopped there, but I don't think we were given necessarily good guidance or where. Now it looks like the others were voted down too. When the one, one was approved. To enter a development agreement for the property. I don't know how you could enter a development agreement if it's not in. Yes, it's okay. Okay, well that's the. That, okay, yeah, that does make sense, yeah. Then they voted down amendment of the future land use map, so, so all that got done was. A request to enter into a development agreement. All right, I'm showing after seven o'clock, so I'd like to call to order the December sixteenth regular meeting of the Tarpon Springs Planning and Zoning Board. And can I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Hesse. Mr. Seaman.
Here.
Mr. Stervopoulos.
Here.
Mr. Vessi.
Here.
Ms. McCumber.
Here.
Ms. Veehill.
Here.
Mr. Kuzkudus.
Here.
Mr. Morgan.
Here.
All right, we have a quorum, and item number two would be the approval of the minutes from November eighteenth meeting. Do you have any, any comments or a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for the meeting for November eighteenth, 2019, as written.
I second that motion.
We have a roll call.
Mr. Morgan.
I agree.
Mr. Kuzkudus.
I'm gonna have to abstain since I wasn't at the meeting, so I can't verify the information on the minutes, so I will have to abstain.
Nope, you can vote, actually.
I can?
Yes, you can, and you are required to vote.
Okay, all right, then I will vote to accept the minutes, not as to their veracity, but the fact that, that we'll accept them.
Ms. Veehill?
Better, there you go.
Yes.
Mr. Stervopoulos?
Yes.
Mr. Vessi?
Yes.
Ms. McCumber?
Yes.
All right, can we have the quasi judicial announcement and swearing in of speakers?
This is a quasi judicial proceeding where the Planning and Zoning Board acts in a quasi judicial rather than a legislative capacity. At a quasi judicial hearing, it is not the board's function to make law, but rather to apply law that has already been established. In a quasi judicial hearing, the board is required by law to make findings of fact based upon the evidence presented at the hearing, and apply those findings of fact to previously established criteria contained in the Code of Ordinances in order to make a legal decision regarding the application before it. The board may only consider evidence at this hearing that the law considers competent, substantial, and relevant to the issues. If the competent, substantial, and relevant evidence at the hearing demonstrates that the applicant has met the criteria established in the Code of Ordinances, then the board is required by law to find in favor of the applicant. By the same token, if the competent, substantial, and relevant evidence at the hearing demonstrates that the applicant has failed to meet the criteria established in the Code of Ordinances, then the board is required by law to find against the applicant. Are there any members of the board wishing to disclose any ex parte communication or conflicts of interest tonight? Do you know, all those that are speaking tonight, or think they may speak, please stand and raise your right hand to be sworn in? Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
So sworn.
All right, that brings us to item number four, application nineteen dash one forty-one. This is a conditional use approval, conditional use for an adult daycare facility located at twelve fifty-four South Pinellas Avenue. Does the staff have a report for us?
Yes, this is a request to establish an adult daycare center in the Neighborhood Business Zoning District. And this proposal is to renovate an existing building to accommodate the adult daycare facility on the first floor and offices on the second floor. And this will operate strictly during the daytime, and transportation for it, the seniors for the adult daycare will be provided to and from the building. There will be meals served, prepared offsite and catered, and there is no expansion of the existing building floor area. With respect to your standards for review under item one, basically, the renovations will meet all building and fire codes and all applicable codes that are required. Again, the existing footprint of the building will not change, and the site layout also will not change. This was previously occupied by the Anytime Fitness that moved closer to town. So this has been a vacant commercial building since then. The TRC reviewed this at their meeting of November seventh, 2019, and approved the recommended approval. With respect to item two, this, again, this area is occupied by basically medical uses, office uses, some commercial retail. The hospital is nearby. There are condominiums to the west of the property. And again, this is a relatively low, business of low intensity, and traffic impact is minimal due to the transportation provided for the clients. And the daytime hours will ensure that the nearby residential uses are not impacted. This space, this commercial building is already served by facilities, parking, access, solid waste pickup, all those amenities and facilities. And it is considered to be compatible with the existing and planned uses in this area. This use is consistent with the city's comprehensive plan. It is not located in a historic district, and there are no environmental concerns. And property values are not expected to be negatively impacted, in fact, maintain, maintained and perhaps enhanced due to the filling of this vacant commercial space. Again, this site is served with water, wastewater, solid waste pickup, and will not require the city to extend public services and will not adversely affect the city's ability to serve it. This is an acceptable and desirable use of this currently vacant commercial space, and it supports the orderly development of the Neighborhood Business District. Staff is recommending approval of Resolution twenty nineteen forty-three with the following conditions. The conditional use will expire within one year of approval if a building permit is not issued for the property. Number two, a copy of the instrument governing, governing use and maintenance of the common elements of Tarpon Bend Professional Center, Property Owners Association, will need to be supplied to document the availability and maintenance of parking drives, landscaping, waste disposal, and other common elements for this property. Number three, all applicable building permits shall be obtained and shall address any renovations necessary to meet the applicable occupancy and fire codes. And this has been properly noticed, and we've not received any responses to the notices. Are there any questions?
Members of the commission have any questions of the staff?
I do. Do you know if the type of use requires any ACA certification?
Yes, it does, and I believe the applicant can speak to that. They have submitted some of that documentation and have discussed that in their narratives in the application in your packet.
In that regard, in that regard, and I, you know, I don't see it as a city requirement, but the type of use that it is, and, and, but, is there, you know, as part of, I don't know if this facility under the ACA rules because it's only a daycare, and maybe the applicant can speak to this, if there's a disaster plan necessary, because I know when you have adult facilities, ACA requires a disaster plan. And if it's not, if a disaster plan is required, I think it'd probably be incumbent upon the city to include that as part of its conditional use, that a disaster plan be, be part of the, part of the requirement.
We can certainly, you know, you could certainly propose a condition. I know at TRC there was a discussion with the fire and police about the types of elders that would be there, whether there were any dementia or wandering concerns or those types of things. And so that was had, but we didn't really talk about disaster plans.
Yeah, does that, you know, to the extent there is, you know, whether you call a storm flooding that required an evacuation, and I think the applicant's shaking their head, they understand what I'm talking about. Yeah, that, that, that should be a condition as well, that they, that they submit a disaster plan that's, that's compliant with ACA.
Okay.
Okay.
And that can be certainly added to a motion or made in a motion.
All right. And just for those, ACA is the Agency for Healthcare Administration.
Any other questions of the staff? Would the applicant care to make comments?
Have to come up to the mic.
Yeah, come, come to the microphone and, and begin by stating your name and address, please.
Good evening, my name is Krista Moffett, and I'm with Retro Life Care. My address at home is nine twenty-four Riverside Ridge Road in Tarpon Springs. Mr. Kuzkudus, you're absolutely right, that is actually a state reg, especially because since what happened with like Hurricane Irma and everything like that. And it actually, the emergency preparedness packet has to be approved yearly. So both for home health agencies and adult day, as well as long-term care, assisted living, things like that. Just a quick little overview about myself and my husband. I've been a geriatric nurse practitioner for twenty of my twenty-five years of practice as a nurse. My husband's been a pharmacist for way longer than that. We had an adult daycare up in New Jersey for twelve years and moved down here, and that's one of the things I think that would be an excellent addition to Pinellas County. Currently serving north of five eighty, right now is one adult daycare that just opened, and that's Neighborhood Care Network just transformed their meal center into an adult daycare. And of course, we'll be right across the street from the hospital. But one of the biggest challenges I think our seniors find is cost effectiveness, which it costs a minimum of twenty, twenty-two, twenty-five dollars a day for home health, an hour. It's, you know, assisted living, nursing home. So this is just a really cost effective solution, I think, for our seniors, as well as for the hospital, being from our clinical backgrounds, which is sadly enough kind of rare in adult daycare. A lot of the folks that do this did something else other than anything clinical. They don't have the nursing or the pharmacy background. But I know that we can also help keep our folks from re-entering the hospital again, using some clinical standards and stuff, so we're very excited. Retro is being modeled after our folks that are part of the Korean War era and the Vietnam era. Most of our World War Two folks are gone now. When I graduated years ago, that was who we focused on, and if you have the honor to meet one of those folks now, that's quite a blessing because there's not many of those folks left. So ours is modeled after a nineteen fifties and nineteen sixties theme, from customer service all the way up to even the physical operations of the plant. This is going to be designed like an old town from the nineteen fifties inside. Our vans are getting wrapped like old Woody wagons with surfboards on top and little fuzzy dice with Hawaiian girls. And we are gonna enter the fifties and the sixties back with these folks again, kind of really encouraging them to have some quality of life and a purpose. And there's more to retirement than bingo and pool noodle volleyball. So we're very excited to be doing this and look forward to be doing it here in Tarpon. So thank you very much.
Do members of the commission have questions for the applicant?
Like I said, I apologize, I'm starting on the right, wrong foot, I don't know, but I talk a lot. First, I wanna, I wanna congratulate you and thank you.
Thank you.
There's a lot of, there's a lot of family caregivers who need some respite with regard to providing care to their, to their loved ones. And this was, this has been needed a long time, especially north Pinellas. So I want, first of all, I wanna thank you.
Thank you, it's an honor.
For the foresight to do that. You know, in my other life, I'm a board certified elder law attorney, and so, you know, I know the demands and the needs, among other things that I do, but, but the demands and needs for, for this type of facility. And again, I said thank you a couple times, I just wanna thank you one more time.
It's my pleasure, thank you. I enjoy that population more than anything else. They have a lot to give back, and a lot of times people don't know how to accept that back from them, so we're excited.
Any, any further questions?
Good, I look forward to seeing y'all there, not as patients, at the ribbon cutting.
Thanks.
All right, do we have any public comments in favor of the application? Seeing none, do we have any public comments not in favor of the application? All right. We can have discussion of the, by the board or, or a motion?
I'll entertain a, I'd like to make a, a motion to accept application nineteen dash one forty-one with the proviso that, that a disaster plan be submitted as part of the conditional use, and that you would keep that plan every year that you require to keep it updated with the city. Because I think it's important for fire department and stuff like that to know what your disaster plan is in the event of something that needs, that requires.
Sir, does your motion also?
With the conditions that are.
The other.
The other conditions. I just added an extra one.
I'll second.
Please.
Mr. Morgan?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzkudus?
Yes.
Ms. Veehill?
Yes.
Mr. Stervopoulos?
Yes.
Mr. Vessi?
Yes.
Ms. McCumber?
Yes.
Mr. Seaman?
Yes.
Motion carries. That brings us to item number five on the agenda, application nineteen dash one fifty-seven, Land Development Code Amendment. This is ordinance twenty nineteen twenty-six, amendments to section two ninety-six, art design standards for development and redevelopment. Do we have staff comments?
Yes. Basically, you've got one, one change to this section of the ordinance. If you look on page two of the resolution, you'll see it, or the second page, actually. The way the ordinance is written now, if an applicant who is required to do public art chooses to pay into the fund rather than do public art, that payment is due prior to a building permit being issued. If they choose to do public art, they just check that box and then they start through the process. The process involves getting with the Public Art Committee and choosing an artist and all that. And then the art has to be finished prior to the project receiving a certificate of occupancy. We have kind of a couple different things happening. One is that the applicants aren't as encouraged to do the public art with this, with this ordinance because of the conflicting timing of those two things. Sometimes we do have applicants who choose public art in order to, basically allowing the permit to be issued and then changing their minds later and saying they wanna pay. Lots of staff time goes into that, and, you know, that, that is something that has been an issue. So we wanted to make them both do at the same time, which is basically the certificate of occupancy. This has been reworded to say the final inspection, they can either pay or they can, will have finished their art project. And that way you don't have a interim time where there may be a question as to what's going to, actually going to be done. That's kind of where we're going with this. It's been an issue with building permitted and building development, and they wanted to correct it. Are there any questions?
I do, I'm sorry.
Does anyone have questions?
I do. Just so I'm clear, because I wasn't here for the initial reading. So initially, if somebody needed a building permit, before they can get the permit, they had to either contribute or, or come up with a, a design for their artwork, correct? That would be approved.
If their project is, if the cost of the project.
Okay.
Meets the threshold, it's, I think, a million dollar project or more project, yes, they have to choose one.
You're changing it before, in other words, does this, the dollar figure, does that count for new construction, or does it include renovation?
It includes any project that's over a million dollars aggregate value.
Okay, so if somebody's renovating, that's gonna be an extensive renovation, they, they, this, this would apply to this.
As far as I know, yeah.
Okay. And you're changing it to, to the extent that the final payment or, or, or before the CO has, is ordered, it has to be finalized before they get to issuance of a CO.
That's correct.
Okay. But they have to decide what they're gonna do before they get a building permit?
They have to check one or the other box.
Okay.
But they, they wouldn't have to make the payment prior to building permit if this change is approved.
They're locked in the one or the other, so whatever they, they have to do, whether it's a piece of art, they're stuck with that, as far as that making that decision.
Yes.
Okay.
Correct.
Well, I think I understand you were saying, though, that in some cases, people were saying they wanted to do the art and, and then coming back later and saying they wanted to pay into the fund.
Right.
Because they didn't wanna have to actually put the cash out that early in the process. Is that, is that right?
That, that's what we think is happening, yeah, but they have to do one or the other. They are committed to doing one or the other. They can't do nothing.
In other words, they don't have to front the entire amount, what I'm meaning here is they don't have to front the balance until after the, they have to front it before they get the CO, but not to get the permit.
Correct.
Okay.
And, and, yeah, that seems reasonable. We, we still have a hammer over their head if they, if they don't do it, they don't get a CO.
Right.
And, and that way at least they don't have to put the money out until they're close to beginning to generate income, so.
Yeah, I didn't want the first draw on some of this stuff to be, have to be paid for, for public art, you know, before you dig dirt.
Before you move dirt, no. And I think that's what they're fixing.
Yeah.
It's locked them into doing one or the other, so they are locked in.
That's correct.
So you won't have that, that pullout at the end where they.
You, you actually prefer them to write a check, don't you?
I don't deal much with this ordinance.
Okay.
You know, I, I think it depends on the project. Sometimes the value of the art is, is even higher than the, than the payments, so.
Then it gets subjective. Who decides what art is acceptable? I know I'm prolonging this, but.
Yeah, there's a whole process, and, and that is in this section. The developer proposes an artist and goes to the Public Art Committee, which is administered by our Cultural Services Department. And they present a piece of art or whatever it is, and I'd have to look it up. It might go to the board after that, I'm not sure, to tell you the truth.
So a description of this could be anything from a public painting.
Oh, sure.
To a statue, to any description of, of a public piece of artwork.
There's all different kinds of artwork that could be proposed, yes.
Okay, well, since we don't have an applicant, I guess we open to public comments, right? Do we have public comments in favor of the application? Not in favor of the application? In that case, I'll, we can either have further discussion or entertain a motion.
I'll, I'll make a motion to approve the change, so that way we can open up the discussion on my motion.
I guess I didn't understand what you said.
I said before with the discussion, I'd like to make a motion, and when the, when the motion's on the table, then we can discuss.
Then we can discuss the motion, yeah.
So I'll make a motion to accept the ordinance.
And I'll second.
Okay.
Is there further discussion?
No.
Can we have a roll call then?
Mr. Morgan?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzkudus?
Yes.
Ms. Veehill?
Yes.
Mr. Stervopoulos?
Yes.
Mr. Vessi?
Yes.
Ms. McCumber?
Yes.
Mr. Seaman?
Yes.
All right, that brings us to item number six on the agenda. Do we have any staff comments?
Yes, I do have one item. The city has just retained a consultant to update or basically rewrite our historic guidelines, our heritage. our heritage preservation board that oversees our historic design guidelines, is going to be kind of involved in adding, running a work, a couple of workshops. But we're going to be doing that and in conjunction, we're going to be looking at that article of our land development code, the heritage preservation, article seven. So those items, that, obviously, the code will be coming to this board for a reading. But I'm going to be including all of you on an email list to participate, comment in on the design guidelines, share with anybody that you know who's interested in historic design guidelines. First update since like nineteen ninety-four or so. It's a big job and we're looking forward to finishing that by June thirtieth. We've got a state grant to do that project, so we'll be sending you an email. And any, like I say, anybody you know, we're going to be creating an email list. So we'll give you some information to get them in touch with us.
Will you be holding public forums and meetings?
We'll have at least one workshop and one open house with the heritage preservation board. So we'll let you know in plenty of time when that'll be.
I, I'm really, I do have one question for, for staff. You know, on our first applicant, one of the things that we had, I obviously made as part of the condition is a disaster plan. I'm just wondering if that's something that rather than having to use that as a condition on a, anytime there's an applicant who has an adult daycare or stuff like that, that we actually make that a requirement? In, 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 I know you'd have to go through, through the process to do that, you just can't do it. But, but that would be a suggestion that to bring in front of the commission, that, that disaster plan, anytime there's a senior housing or adult daycare or any of that stuff, that that is a requirement instead of having us putting it as a conditional use?
Yeah, and I can tell you that this, this had no overnight stays. So we do have that requirement for hotels, nursing homes, those types of things. So, so there are requirements in the code, but not for daycare.
Yeah, so I was just saying, for any type of senior, even adult daycare, that that would be a requirement as opposed to us making that a condition. That's all. Thank you.
Okay, item number seven, board comments. Do we have any board comments? I guess that brings us to adjournment. We can just do a voice vote for that, right? All in favor of adjournment?
Aye.
Aye.
Where adjourned?
Wasn't prepared either.
No.